Here we will, if you'll bear with us just a minute, we're working on some technology. She said she was straight. Ready? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming. I entertain a motion to open this session.
Madam Chair, I move that we reconvene in an open session and adopt certification of closed session.
A second. I need a second.
A second.
There have been a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Ms. Golson?
Certification of closed session. Whereas the Dinwiddie County School Board has convened a closed session on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas paragraph 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Dinwiddie County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board. Dwayne Walker, District One.
I'm District Two, but I certify.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Dr. Elaine Pearson, District One.
I certify.
Barbara Pittman, District Three.
I certify.
Mary Benjamin, District Four.
I certify.
Jason Brown, District Five.
I certify.
Madam Chair, all certify.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. At this time, we are going to participate in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have some helpers from Southside.
We're gonna have Ms. Mia Williams come forward to start us off with the pledge.
Would everyone please stand?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Are there any amendments to the agenda? No amendments?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the agenda, adopt the agenda as it is.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Closed session report?
We accept the first amendment as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And that motion does carry. Student Matters?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the recommendation of the administration and long-term suspend student number LT-02-24-1, finding that the student poses a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of others.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
It's four one. Ms. Golson.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the recommendation of the administration and expel student number E-02-24-1, finding that the student poses a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of others.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Abstain. Are you abstaining?
I said aye.
You said aye. Okay, okay. That's a five zero. Okay.
Madam Chairman, I move we accept the recommendation of the administration and long-term suspend student LT-02-24-2, student LT-02-24-3, and student LT-02-24-4, finding that the student poses a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of others.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Four and one abstention. Thank you. Recognitions. Southside Elementary School. Highlights.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We have our girls today from Pre-Purpose from Southside to present with you. So ladies, do you want to head and get started? They're a little nervous.
Don't be nervous.
We don't bite.
Pre-Purpose is a nonprofit organization founded in 2014 by Bianca Myrick, a mom, teacher, and survivor of domestic violence who wanted to create a safe space for girls to glow and grow. The program is centered around a strength-based approach, healing-centered engagement, social-emotional learning, and effective practice of group mentoring. Was started as a small group in Petersburg, now serves over 175 girls in Petersburg, Hopewell, Sussex, Chesterfield, and Dinwiddie Public Schools and communities. The organization also partners with local colleges each year to offer internship opportunities and university mentors to assist with programming. In Dinwiddie, our program was piloted at Southside Elementary School in 2022. Now we have a Pre-Purpose Girl Circle meeting twice a month after school at each of the elementary schools in our county. Our girls are guided by two to three paid facilitators who receive training over the summer with our curriculum. These facilitators are teachers or school counselors from each school. Dinwiddie has one college intern match to all of our schools, and each school has one to three university mentors who assist the facilitators. We have also begun to build, began to build a bridge for our girls to transition into the pearls mentoring program once they reach the middle school. The program focuses on health and wellness, social-emotional skills, social change, and leadership. Additionally, we learn advocacy and storytelling skills through training and workshop, complete with participation and advocacy day at the General Assembly where we connect with legislators to champion youth policy. Thus far in our program for the 2023 to 2024 school year, we have learned the importance of goal setting by creating vision boards, identify the connection between self-esteem and body image, as well as discuss personal hygiene and health. Each of us received a full hygiene kit donated from Target. We also explored recognizing healthy and unhealthy relationships, caring for our bodies through various physical fitness activities. We would now like to share our vision boards. My vision board says positive because you always have to be positive about yourself and others. My vision board represents making the earth prettier and cleaner. My vision board says believe because you should always believe in yourself even when things are tough. My vision board says be bold because you should always have the courage to be happy. My vision board says be positive because you should always be positive about yourself. My vision board has magic because magic to me is power. We have attended the Hip-Hop Nutcracker at the Altria Theater and have various job shadowing opportunities with companies like Sabre, Touchstone Bank, and Barry Ashley. We will end the year with our advocacy and leadership project that teaches us how to be a leader and change agent in our community. Finally, at the close of our program for the year, we will have our signature closing tea party at the Blue Willa Tea Room in Petersburg, Virginia. We would like to thank our administrators for allowing this program in our schools. If you are a Pre-Purpose facilitator, mentee, or volunteer from any of our elementary schools, please stand and be recognized. School Board members, we ask you to join us on our journey to continue our programs in the Division. Your support is necessary. We hope to eventually be able to even offer a community-based site in Dinwiddie.
They did a fabulous job, and we're so proud of them. And I want to introduce the ladies. When I call your name, turn around. Azariah Plankwell.
Thank you.
Mia Williams. Viviana Ross. London Penny. I found Morgan. And George White. And they have some small gifts to give each and every one of you. And we do have a PowerPoint to show you the other things that have been happening at Southside. And while we're getting that started, I'd like to thank De'Andre Redd, Annette Peterson-Smith, Ebony Everett, and De'Nisha Brown for their hard work with these ladies.
Thank you, dear.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your presentation. Let's give them another round of applause. And Spelling Bee.
All right. Good afternoon. This week, we recognize Virginia Kindness Week throughout the district, and I encourage everyone to visit our Facebook page to check out all the wonderful ways that we are showing kindness this week at all of our schools as well as the central office. I am pleased to announce that we will have, we have been very busy here at Dinwiddie County Public Schools. However, we want to take the time out to recognize some wonderful DCPS family members. First, I would like to call up our 2024 Division Spelling Bee winner and runner-up. The wagon? The prize wagon, please? All right. This year's winner is Megan Tabamo, and our runner-up is Madison Barrett. Would you please come forward? All right, ladies. So both of you, each young lady will receive a wonderful plaque to display your accomplishments. This one goes to Megan Tabamo, this year's winner. Congratulations. This one goes to Madison Barrett, runner-up for this year. Congratulations. All right. Ladies, a few words, but they said thank you. You may be seated. Okay. All right. Next, we will have a representative from the CTE department to come forward.
All right. Well, good evening, Board. Ms. Burnett, Ms. Golson.
There.
Dr. Weston, Jonathan, Amani, all of our students and families in attendance. This is just awesome. My name is Burke George. I am the Coordinator of Career and Technical Education for the school district. And February is actually CTE Month across the country. Last week, Governor Youngkin actually released a proclamation recognizing CTE Month here in the Commonwealth. And so it's a fitting time to do a couple of things tonight. I'll actually be back up here in a few hours, giving an overview of the CTE program to our board. But right now, we want to recognize a few of our student groups. It would, no exaggeration, it would take me an hour to recognize everything we're doing in CTE and what our different career and technical student organizations are doing, not just in our, in our schools, but out in the community, across the Commonwealth, even across the nation. And that's no exaggeration. But this evening, I've asked representatives from our culinary program and our business program and our technical education program to come and share really some of the amazing work that they're doing, have done this year. Where's the clicker? Do we have a clicker? Oh. So I entitled this developing citizenship through CTE for a reason. CTE is career and technical education, of course. This is the five Cs. When we talk about, you know, preparing future-ready graduates in the Commonwealth of Virginia, these are the five Cs. These are all very important skills. So critical thinking, collaboration, communication, creative thinking. But last, in purple up there, citizenship skills, okay? What is more important than, than developing students that value being a good citizen, right, and giving back to their community, and doing good for others, being kind, and, and really putting others before themselves? Okay? There's really nothing more important to that. And so at this time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to have our culinary student leaders, so we've got several of our culinary student leaders, they're going to come up, they're going to introduce themselves, and then Colin Rudis and Shadaya Jones are actually going to brief you all on a couple of things that they did this year to give back in and around this region.
All right.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shadaya Jones, and I am the current FCC LA president.
Good evening. My name is Troy Kowalik, and I'm taking baking and pastry.
My name is Caitlin Patterson. I'm taking bacon and pastry.
Good evening. My name is Harrison Murray. I'm in 12th grade. I'm currently taking baking and pastry.
My name is Colin Rudis, and I'm in 12th grade, and I'm currently taking baking and pastry, and I'm planning on going to college for baking and pastry arts next year. So Feedmore is a food bank in Richmond that uses volunteers to prepare and distribute food around central Virginia. We went up there on a field trip, and we use skills that we learned in class to help give back, and we helped them prepare different foods, such as using our knife-cut skills to slice tomatoes and our food preparation skills to help them prepare a bunch. And here are some pictures. That's us cutting tomatoes with our knife skills, putting ravioli on trays, stirring beef stew, and that's a picture of everyone that went.
Okay, so in the month of November, we participated in the sponsorship of King Arthur Flour. Basically, what we did for them is we got all the ingredients that were sent to us, we made bread, and we distributed it back to the Dinwiddie Food Bank. Yeah, that's pretty much all. And, oh yeah, here are pictures of us making bread. It was her, Ms. Capucci's Culinary One in her intro class, so she has two classes of those from last semester, and these are pictures of all of us.
Thank you. So, you guys can stand back here. Before I segue into the FPLA presentation, I wanted to just make mention on the Feedmore trip, I actually had the privilege of joining these students. And there's two types of jobs at, at Feedmore. And Feedmore is a busy place. Feedmore Richmond is distributing food all over the state of Virginia. Okay? That's the central hub. But they have the unskilled jobs. That was me. So they put me on like the packing, you know, I was packing boxes and things of that nature, still important but unskilled. But the really neat thing about that trip is these students were in, were actually in the commercial kitchen, okay, which is a busy kitchen with kitchen managers and chefs and head chefs. And they actually, I watched them put skills that they've learned in the culinary program. Chef Capucci was, would have been very proud, and she was proud because she was obviously there with us, skills that they learned in their program to work in a commercial kitchen under a time crunch with goals to meet. So I just thought it was such a great experience and a way to take your experience and apply it to the greater good. So thank you all for your work there. Okay, at this time, I am going to have some of our future business leader, Leaders of America, student leaders, come up and, and give you an overview of a few of the great projects that they've worked on this year that have been about giving back to others.
Good afternoon. My name is Patience Carnes, and I'm in 10th grade. And a little bit about FPLA is we're a business, I mean, yeah, we're a business club, and we help you learn about how to maintain a business, start a business, or how to be successful in a business. So. So here is, we planned this event on Bus Appreciation Week, I think it was. We made breakfast goodie bags, and we set up in the morning before the buses came, and we gave out goodie bags individually and told that, we told the bus drivers how much we appreciate them because they have hard, we, they just real hard workers, and we just, we wanted to, we wanted to show them how much we really appreciate them and how much hard work they do.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Emma Brown. I'm the president of FPLA. That was our secretary, Patience Carnes. Today, I'll be talking about FPLA sock drive. This also goes along with our Champion Chapter Tracker that we do every month for FPLA. It's a part of National FPLA for Virginia as well as the Tri-Cities Region. We did this sock drive from December 4th through the 15th in 2023. The people that were able to give back, where was anybody in the school? We had boxes located in different areas around the school. We said announcements in the morning. We sent out emails. We had out flyers. So we advertised it really well. We got a few socks, and we were able to donate it to the James House. This was a great way to give back to the community and get more people to know what FPLA is and not just that we're a business organization, but that we do stuff for the community as well as help out with the people around us. But now I'll give it to Malik Price.
Good evening. My name is Malik Price, and I'm the secretary assistant of FPLA in Dinwiddie High School. I'll be talking about Project Feedmore. We did this at Sutherland Elementary. It was like another thing to give out to the community. We did it every Thursday of each month. And some, another thing like Culinary Arts Day, we did it with FFA, and it was just something, something nice to do to give out to the community.
Good evening. My name is Nala Bain. I'm the vice president here at FPLA, and this is a picture of all our members. We have 30-plus members, and honestly, we wouldn't be nothing without our members. They are involved, active, they participate in every event that we have. So we, we're just so grateful, my officers, my advisors, we are just so grateful to have the members that we do, and we hope, we hope to continue to grow each year because we have, is increase more and more. So, thank you.
So I just wanted to take a minute. I think it would be remiss not to thank all of our career and technical education student organization advisors. The thing with CTE is your, your career and technical student organization is co-curricular. Okay? So if you were in a business class, you were learning about FPLA. If you were in an agriculture class, you were learning about FFA as part of the curriculum. That's required. But what's not required is what these teachers are doing, taking these students out and about across, across the region and the state to, to help get them these experiences. We actually have two of our advisors here. We have, of course, Ms. Bailey, our FPLA advisor. Who'll stand up, Ms. Bailey? And we have Mr. Bullock, who we're getting ready to recognize. One of Mr. Bullock's engineering students in just a minute. These experiences that our, that our advisors try to help provide for the students, they'll never be forgotten. Okay? These, I can promise you, our culinary students will never forget the day they went to Feedmore Richmond, okay, and helped, and helped, you know, apply what they learned in such a, such a, such a great way. Okay? Last but not least, Eric Edwards. I met with Eric this morning. I said, Eric, I have you in Infinite Campus. It's Chad and Eric. You know, which, which one do you go by? And he said, it doesn't matter. And I said, well, which one does your mom call you? And he said Eric. So Eric Edwards, I want to, I got an email, I saw an email come across to the Dinwiddie High School staff about, about a month ago, and it just caught my attention. It was from Mr. Bullock. So it caught my attention, one, because he usually doesn't send out, you know, staff-wide emails. So I said, you know, let me read this. So I'm actually going to read this email to you right now, and it'll be a good way to kick off how we're going to recognize Eric. It said, "Congratulations to your following students in my technical drawing classes. I was truly amazed by their designs and craftsmanship." And that's on a Bridge Trust design assignment. Their designs maxed out our stress analyzer at 1,000 pounds. Okay? This next part really caught, caught my attention. Mr. Edwards, that's Eric, his design was truly the best I have seen since starting my career in 1980. Yeah. And so- Yeah. And so I said, well, we need to get Eric here and see, tell us a little bit about his, his, his design and we can recognize his accomplishments. And then Mr. Bullock went on to say, "I wish to thank all of my students for working so hard on this project. Mr. Edwards has a future engineer in the engineering field if he so chooses. When you see him out and about, please, please congratulate him." So congratulations on quite the accomplishment. It's not every, it's not every day that a teacher with, what, 43 years of experience has, you know, such great things to say about your work. So if you would, if you could just come up and tell us a little bit about how you went about designing that project.
Dean Moore.
Evening.
I'm Eric Edwards, 12th grade senior at Denwoodie High School. So our assignment was to build the lightest, strongest bridge. My design was to take the, what do you wanna call it? I took Mr. Bullock's design, a simple design of a trust bridge, and added to my own idea. I kept it as simple as possible and decided to take it, the challenge myself. We could work as a group of two, but I decided I'd do it myself and, and yeah.
It worked out for you.
Yeah. The testing process was, it was a flatboard that went down on top of it and a metal probe went down the middle. That flatboard would pull down on it as the load of the bridge, they had to meet certain points to where it would distribute it out through the whole entire bridge. So instead of one or two parts of the bridge taking the load, it would go out through the entire thing, which would maximize the machine. Guess that's about it.
Eric, hold your bridge up so I can see the whole thing. Thank you. Thank you. So since yours maxed out at the 1,000 pounds, it didn't get to be broken. So that's a good thing.
As much as I would have liked to see how much it went, it's pretty nice that it did hold up. And I did have a drawing here. Forgot to do that.
Before they. Okay. And this class is engineering drawing? Thank you, Eric.
Let's have a round of applause for Eric. I want to thank these, all of these students and these organizations and these, our advisors again for their hard work. I just wanted to end on this. This, educators are familiar with this, non-educators may not be. And just to simplify this, this just shows a pyramid of what we are shooting for when we teach, okay? And rather than just shooting for having students remember things and be able to regurgitate it like flashcards, we really want to work towards the top of that pyramid. And if you think about CTE and what these students are doing in designing bridges, they're out there and they're solving problems. They're getting to the top end of this Bloom taxonomy. And so that's what we shoot for in career and technical education. It's all about experiences and hands-on learning and applying what you learn to solve problems. Because that, that'll translate over into what all of you do, no matter what you choose to do with your careers, okay? Thank you again. This time, if there's any questions from the board, we'd be happy to take them.
Any questions about the CTE? We thank you so much for bringing these projects to us. Thank you, students, for coming.
All right. Thank you all.
All right. Dr. Weston and the board, I will be remiss to not acknowledge, or Ms. Drake came up and she made sure to whisper in my ear that we have some other special pretty purpose young ladies from Sunnyside Elementary and their sponsors. So ladies, please wave your hand. Thank you as well for coming out. Next, we'll have Mrs. Emily Branch. She will recognize our Teacher of the Year. I'll move on until she comes out. All right. While we're waiting for Mrs. Branch to come in, we're gonna just segue. Let's see. Tonight, I have the pleasure of recognizing our school board members. They are the heart of the education system. This year's theme is building the future of public education. And I truly believe that we have the right group to do just that. School boards around the country voluntarily tackle the enormous job of governing public school divisions while preserving the core of our demographic values. When I call your name, please wave. First, Barbara T. Pittman, Board Chair, Division Three. Mary M. Benjamin, Vice Chair, District Four. And now introducing our new school board members. Dr. Elaine J. Pearson, District One. Mr. Dwayne Walker, District Two. Mr. Jason Brown II, District Five. We also have two special board members that I've had the pleasure to work closely with, and I thank you, Dr. Weston, for allowing me to have that opportunity. Both of them represented Denwoodie well at the past V S B A conference where they took first place in school board trivia against other school board members from all over the state of Virginia. They are a dynamic duo. They are none other than Imani McLaughlin Jr. from Denwoodie High School and Jonathan Machado Aguilar, Senior at Denwoodie High School. All right, we have some gifts and we're gonna pass them out as we're going along as well. Okay, Bonnie is giving me the finger. Let's see.
Serving on a school board is one of the most challenging yet rewarding. Hello, I'm Cardielle Patillo, President of the Virginia School Boards Association. At February, the School Board Appreciation Month. Serving on a school board is one of the most challenging yet rewarding ways to give back to your community. Nothing in life can truly prepare you for the unique demands and responsibilities that come with serving on a school board. In Virginia alone, we have over 850 dedicated school board members, each representing diverse backgrounds and experiences who have willingly accepted the crucial task of overseeing education for our students throughout the Commonwealth. This February, I urge you to take a moment and express your gratitude to the local school board members in your community. They deserve to know that their tireless efforts and wavering dedication are recognized and appreciated. Your support can make a real difference in motivating and inspiring these individuals to continue their vital work. To my fellow school board members across Virginia, I want to extend my heartfelt appreciation. You consistently put the needs of our children first, ensuring they receive the quality education they deserve. Your commitment as leaders, advocates, and supporters of public education is commendable and vital to the future success of our communities. So let's join together this February and celebrate the School Board Appreciation Month. Let's express our gratitude and show our local school board members that we value their hard work, dedication, and wavering commitment to Virginia students. Together, we can make a difference in the lives of our children and the future of our great Commonwealth.
At this time, we come bearing gifts. So all that have gifts, please come forward for our school board members real quick. Yeah, you, yes. All right, Mr. Carnes is gonna come up and say something on behalf of the principals, okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Greetings, everyone. So I was voluntold. So because I was voluntold, I'm gonna ask all the principals to stand, all of the teachers, and even the students, stand. Before I, before I do this, I do wanna say that I am extremely proud of my students. I am extremely proud of my students. And I am very proud of my teachers, the advisors. And I, I also wanna personally thank Mr. George for all the work that he does with these children. It is outstanding. And I just want you all to give them another round of applause. And thank you, parents, as well. So, to all of you, your work is not easy work. Your work is not always appreciated work, but your work is important work. May you continue to make the best decisions for the students and staff of Denwoodie County Public Schools. May you always lead with your heart and with courage as your work makes a difference and it helps to make DCPS a premier district. On behalf of the principals, staff, and students of every Denwoodie County Public School, we say thank you, we appreciate you, and we honor you. Happy School Board Appreciation Month. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Well, how do you know, what do you know about the fact that behind every school board, we have the heartbeat of our boardroom? And we have been blessed with two awesome ladies. This week, they are celebrating School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. Ladies, please wave your hand. Bonnie Gosum, Board Clerk, Hannah Burnett, Deputy Clerk. So we wanna thank our board, our student reps, and our board clerks for their hard work and dedication. At this time, as I mentioned, we have gifts. We have a few other gifts in the back and we'll make sure that you get them before you leave today as well. And as I close, I would like to congratulate our DHS Scholarship Bowl team. They have now received the title of Super Region Scholarship or Scholasket Bowl Champion Team, as well as the 4B Regional Champ. We wanna wish them success in the state championship, which takes place on February the 24th. Also, I would like to remind everyone that next month, we would like everyone to participate in the Virginia Read One Books Campaign. It begins on March 4th. Ms. Drake, would you please come forward to distribute your book bundles to our board members? This year's title is Judy Moody Was in a Mood by Megan McDonald. Every student at our Title One Elementary Schools and their families will receive their book and will join with others across the state to read each night. As you know, we had a lot of fun last year where we captured people reading at the barber shop, in their community, at work, and we plan to do the same thing. Over the course of this funny and touching book, Judy shows us that life is less about what happens and more about how we choose to rule through it. Stay tuned to our DCPS Facebook page as well as our DCPS Facebook page for all of the excitement that will take place next month. We invite you to participate with us as we continue our literacy efforts throughout the division and build a community of lifelong readers. Ms. Emily Branch, are you in the room? All right. Yes, ma'am. Oh, Bonnie?
Hello, I'm Cardielle Patillo, President of the Virginia School Boards Association. February 12th through the 16th, 2024, has been announced as School Board Clerk's Appreciation Week. This is a week dedicated to honoring our incredible school board clerks as they play a vital role in supporting school board members and effective governance teams. Board clerks work tirelessly to provide services to school boards, including ensuring accurate records, scheduling meetings, giving the proper notification, and many other duties. But their contributions go beyond administrative duties. Many of our school board clerks in Virginia also serve other capacities, directly impacting the lives of our students and shaping the future of our student divisions. Today and every day, we want to express our heartfelt gratitude to all school board clerks for their wavering dedication. Your hard work and commitment paved the way for the success of Virginia's public schools. So join us and celebrate the School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. Take a moment to thank the school board clerks in your community for the invaluable contributions they make. Together, let's show our appreciation for their efforts in shaping the future of education in Virginia. Thank you, school board clerks, for all that you do. Your impact is immeasurable and we are truly grateful.
All right.
Good afternoon. It brings me great, great pleasure and honor to be able to present to you our 2023 and 2024 Teachers of the Year. I know I am not alone in the fact that I believe that Denwoodie County Public Schools have some of the best and brightest instructors here in the county as well as the world. And the Teacher of the Year process is an opportunity for us to highlight those individuals and then also recommend one candidate to go forth to the state's consideration for the Regional Teacher of the Year. We have seven teachers that were recognized and one teacher that was selected as our Division Y Teacher of the Year. At this time, I would like to recognize each teacher. As I call your name, I ask that you please come forward and accept your plaque. And I'm going to ask that you would line up starting at my right. The first Teacher of the Year I would like to highlight is Ms. Sabrina Marshall of Denwoodie Elementary School. Ms. Marshall is working on her second year with Denwoodie County Public Schools. Thank you. And she has quickly formed deep roots within the community she serves. I remember Ms. Marshall when she interviewed with us and I still have the poem, "Be the best of whatever you are" on my desk. She is, has excellent rapport with her colleagues and is passionate about helping her students succeed. I'd also like to recognize Ms. Abby Hawkins of Midway Elementary School. Ms. Hawkins has 10 years of experience with DCPS, but 16 years total of teaching experience. Throughout her career, she strives to inspire students with her passion for math so that they will have a lasting impact on their education and future. Under her tenure, one of her greatest accomplishments is contributing to the improvement of math scores shortly after her hire at DCPS. Her attention-grabbing examples and real-life experiences keep students engaged. Her principal states that Hawkins is a master teacher. She integrates creativity and fun while maintaining a high degree of rigor. And she's excellent at using data to adjust instruction. Congratulations again, Ms. Abby Hawkins. I would now like to recognize Ms. Caitlin Osborne from Sutherland Elementary School. Ms. Osborne has six years of experience with DCPS as a teacher. Oh, you came up here so fast. Thank you. Six years of experience as a teacher, and it would be many more years if we were to count the years as a child that she played schoolteacher with her younger brother and stuffed animals. Her dream has now become a reality where she has touched the lives of many students in both elementary and secondary level. Many know her for her over-the-top classroom transformations in which she uses different themes to engage students in learning and bring topics to life. Students say that she makes hard subjects easy, and parents say that she has instilled confidence and helped their children blossom into honor roll students. Congratulations to you, Ms. Osborne. I would now like to recognize Ms. Elenora Ampe, who is an early childhood special education teacher at Southside Elementary School. She bedazzled today, y'all. I don't know if she wears that around the kids. Ms. Ampe started as a substitute teacher with Denwoodie County Public Schools and then a teacher since 2005. For 19 years and counting, she has made a personal and lasting contribution in building a good foundation for youth. It is her belief that every individual is entitled to a strong academic foundation, which leads to positive attitudes, academic success, and enhanced social, social emotional health. A veteran teacher with excellent classroom management skills, she is called upon many times to be a mentor and a times to be a mentor and a model to new teachers entering the profession, raising the bar high for her colleagues to follow. Congratulations, Ms. Ampe. I would now like to highlight Ms. Jessica Lilly of Sunnyside Elementary School. Ms. Lilly has deep roots with Sunnyside Elementary School, and today's honor is a culmination of the growth and experiences she's gained in being connected to Dinwiddie County. She notes that the magic of Sunnyside is what sparked her dream to become a teacher in her youth. She is very appreciative for all the wonderful people who made her experience in school worthwhile at Sunnyside. She is also inspired by her mother, who was an educator at Prince George County Public Schools for 40 years. Colleagues say that she has the gift of reading, keeping her students' attention and begging for her to read again. A parent who is also a teacher states that Ms. Lilly is truly nurturing and meets her students' needs, even to the lengths of creating a personalized song to keep her students on track and organized. Congratulations to you, Ms. Lilly. I'd also like to recognize Ms. Becky Trammell, who is a math teacher at Dinwiddie Middle School. Ms. Trammell has 29 years of experience with us grand total. 25 of those years have been here in Dinwiddie County Public Schools. Mrs. Trammell wanted to be a teacher since the first day she stepped into kindergarten. Over time, many people influenced her career choice, including her parents. She considers her greatest contribution to be seen in her students. She does not feel titles are important to her. She is willing to roll up her sleeves and get the work done. Her Assistant Principal, Ms. Hawkins, says that she goes above and beyond to meet students' needs and consistently demonstrates the qualities of leadership and the passion for doing what is right. We salute you, Ms. Becky Trammell. And finally, for our Teacher of the Year candidate at Dinwiddie High School, as well as our Division Y Teacher of the Year, I would like to congratulate Ms. Towanda Johnson. She wants to congratulate all her other colleagues first, probably. Ms. Johnson has 20 years of experience as an educator. 15 of those years have been with Dinwiddie County Public Schools in both elementary and secondary level. Ms. Johnson has been known to collaborate with general education teachers to contribute to breaking down barriers, cultivating a culture of inclusion, promoting students to pursue an advanced diploma instead of the standard diploma. In reading what the Director of Exceptional Education and Superintendent have to say about Ms. JJ, they say in a nutshell that she's keenly aware of her students' strengths and unique challenges. Her ability to influence students and parents to think differently and aim high has ultimately shaped into her new superpower. She is involved in a plethora of extracurricular activities, a Girl Scouts troop leader, and is committed to social action, scholarship, sisterhood, and service through Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Ms. Johnson just submitted her final application to the state last week, and we look forward to hearing back from them and hopefully having her recognized as a regional candidate. Can you all join me in saluting our 2023-2024 Teachers of the Year? Congratulations to each of you once again, and I would be remiss if I failed to say that I realize the success of you as an educator would not be accomplished without an awesome group of support and a village of supporters right behind you. So I ask at this time if there are any family members, colleagues, that have come to share in the success of our Teachers of the Year, we ask that you please stand at this time. Sorority Sisters, too. Yes. Teacher of the Year is the highlight of my year, and it is absolutely a privilege to be able to recognize our teachers for all the great things that they do, even those that may not be standing in front of us today. So before you leave for the day, send a text message, send an email, or when you see someone tomorrow, thank a teacher for all the hard work that they do. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
And I also have the sleeves for your plaques if you would like to get them after we take a picture, after a recognition.
We're going to allow the board members to make comments now, and then following that, we pause for just a few minutes in case the students or teachers need to leave for the evening as far as homework and so forth. Someone start the board member comments down here with Dr. Pearson.
I just want you to know that I enjoyed all the presentations this evening. I was particularly pleased to see the students using vision boards, and I hope that they will continue to use those to help them along throughout the year. Congratulations to the Spelling Bee winners, to our Teachers of the Year, and especially thank you, all of you, for your appreciation of us as school board members and for the gifts you have given us this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
I just want to, again, thank you all for your kindness, and as new board members, it's been a pleasure to meet so many new people through this experience and to see your graciousness and kindness and giving us some room to learn. I just want to thank you for that as well. And I can't not acknowledge Ms. Golson, Ms. Burnett over here, because it's impossible to figure this stuff out without them. I just want to help, but sometimes you get in a position where you can help, but you don't know how to do it, and you need folks like that. Also, I want to acknowledge Dr. Weston. It's been a joy working through this transition period. But at the end of the day, when these young people are 35 years old, none of them will remember who I am, but they will remember those teachers. And so I think the attention, I'm glad that the attention was placed on them today, and we're very grateful. The teachers are who make a difference, so we want to support them in what they do.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin.
Good evening to everyone. Much has been said that I would actually say it's no need for me to repeat it, but I am just so happy to see each of you and the accomplishments that our students make. That's why we are here, and I really appreciate the teachers, parents, and the time that you put in with your students. But the Teacher of the Year this year is especially special to Emily and to me, because on the day that she was chosen, I had the privilege to present to her, along with Natanya, her flowers. So that meant a lot to me because she is my sorority sister, and so is Emily, and Emily having the privilege and the opportunity to present to her Teacher of the Year, and that is awesome, and we do appreciate the opportunity, I'm sure we all do. But again, thank you, thank you, thank you for coming, and I do see a little special guest back there, Jonathan's brother. Good to see you. Yes, so thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, thank you to everyone. As Mr. Walker had mentioned, it's definitely been a transition. When we were at the VSBA new member orientation meeting that they had for us, one of the first things they said to open up is nothing can prepare you for your first school board meeting. I've done tons of reading, I've done tons of learning, I've done tons of talking, but nothing prepares you for being up here, because you think you're going to cough wrong, you think you're going to use the wrong colored pen, all sorts of stuff. But Dinwiddie has been my home all of my life, and I'm definitely starting to feel that sentiment again, being here as well, just the welcome, just the spirit and the atmosphere. I felt like I had so much to say because there were so many different things that I thoroughly enjoy. Thank you to everyone, all the gifts that were given to us. I'm 23 now, and for the last 23 years, my mom has always been my Valentine. She definitely has competition tomorrow when I show her all the stuff that I've done with Dinwiddie County did. So yeah, she can no longer just get me a bag of M&amp;M's and call it a year. Also, to FPLA, I was with that when I was in middle school with Ms. Robinson Williams and Ms. Roselle. I was also president, last name Brown, to see another president Brown as well for that FPLA is like pretty interesting. So there's, I'm sure, plenty of presidents later down the road with the last name Brown that will be coming up, so that was super exciting to see. Also, to the Spelling Bee winners, that's always super exciting for me. As I had mentioned to Megan, I got to talk to her and her mom earlier. I had won the Spelling Bee a few years when I was in Sutherland, and that was something I always looked forward to every single year, because around the time I was born is when the movie Akela and the Bee came out with Kiki Palmer. I'm sure, I see a lot of nodding heads, so you might have seen it. And so that was just one of those things where you see something on TV and you're like, that could be me. And so you aspire to do it, you train, you practice, and so it was super exciting talking to you all. Definitely learned how to spell the word despicable, that's what I got out on, so do not. I'm trying to learn from my mistakes and mistakes of other people. Also, Ms. Lilly, it was super exciting seeing you. If I'm correct, Jessica Lilly, her first year teaching at Dinwiddie Middle School, I was in her class. She was my English teacher, so I remember my love for The Maze Runner. That's from you. I would say that she maybe gave me a contagious love for Taylor Swift. I'm not as big of a fan as you are. Teacher's definitely influenced her students' lives. I'm sure you were really pretty excited the other night. Also, Delta Sigma Theta, super exciting to see you guys. My brothers are Capua, my cousins are AKAs, so anytime I'm around Greeks, I get excited. But thank you all for listening to this, and thank you for just the love in the room.
Thank you. We appreciate so much our board clerks, and they're so talented and dedicated, and their skill is just amazing, and I'm just so grateful that they work for us because they keep us focused and in going in the right direction. And if any of us have a problem or we need something, we just need to call and ask, and it's so easy for us to do our jobs because they're so good at their jobs. The Teachers of the Year, I say that the wonderful thing about you guys winning those is that you're nominated and elected and selected by your peers, and that's the best reward that you can have, is that people around you that you work with and work for do see that you're a leader and that you're successful. And so I'm so happy for those seven who got that. Our CTE focus is outstanding. We are really strong in that area here in Dinwiddie, and the students get job experiences, they get training experiences. Sometimes they find what their calling is for life in those classes. Sometimes they think that their calling is for life and that, and they take a class or they'll go on a field trip and decide, nope, that's not what I want to do. And both of those experiences are important while you're still young. So thank you for participating tonight, and thank you for applying yourself to all the activities and so forth that we have here in Dinwiddie. And to the Spelling Bee winners, I am always in awe, because I am just as thankful as I can be for spell check. I am amazed when I watch you guys. And to our Academic Bowl people, I know they're not here tonight, but we wish them good luck in their quest to be a state champion this coming weekend. So thank you. And we're going to take just a few minute pause in case any of you need to leave, but if you want to stay with us and enjoy in all the fun, we like that, too. Thank you.
Yes, they do.
We will be focusing in our our consent agenda with our expenditure reports.
We have a motion and a second for the expenditure reports. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion does carry. The minutes for January 11th and 23rd.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the minutes of January 11th, 2024 and January the 23rd, 2024.
I second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And that motion carries. Board matters with the DECA Leadership Field Trip. Mr. Torres.
Good evening, new board members. I'm Archie Torres. For those who don't know, I think it's just one. Um you make me feel really old, Jason. Um but uh here to present a few of the upcoming field trips. First one is the DECA State Leadership Conference. Um it's going to be, this one's held in Virginia Beach. Uh they have three chaperones going, 12 students that are leaving Friday morning, March 1st, and will return uh March 3rd, Sunday. Um we're looking for approval. They will be taking the activity bus down and I believe one or two vehicles so they could get around town once they're down there. Uh Ms. Gravely, Ms. Nivens are the ones going. Um the third one, I think, is Mr. George, are you going with them? I think Mr. George is going is the bus driver. So any questions? Seeking approval?
Okay, I need a motion for the DECA State Leadership. Start this in.
I mean that we approve the trip.
All we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that trip is approved.
All right, the second one I believe we have is Ms. Massengill's. Uh Ms. Massengill and Ms. Cowan uh for the gifted students going to the United States Holocaust Memorial Memorial Museum and National Mu- Museum of African American History in Washington DC. Looking for approval because the trip is outside of our jurisdiction. Um we are, they're taking two buses. They are charter buses. They're gonna leave at eight o'clock in the morning um and return by 6:00 PM. We're looking at approximately 80 students and 12 plus chaperones going.
Any questions about that trip?
I would just like to make one correction. It's not just gifted students. We are taking others high school students as well.
Uh we are, okay. I'm sorry.
If there are no questions, we need a motion for approval.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the the trip going to the United States Holocaust Museum and the National Museum of African American History.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Senior class trip.
Final one is the senior class trip uh sponsored by Ms. JJ. Um she's taking roughly, she said around 40 students. Um about the numbers of adults will be going will be seven. It's going to cost about 275 per student. Um they will be taking a charter bus and they're gonna heading out to the Massanutten Resort where they'll do the cavern tours, James Madison University. Um she has, if you look at the screen up there on one, the one, it's the breakdown of the trip itinerary um down there. You know, she has a planned out breakfast, departure from breakfast, you know, she has it out to a T there. Um but we're looking for approval because it is an overnight trip.
Any questions about the senior class trip?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the senior class trip.
I need a second.
Second.
Uh there's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I did have one question. Are they doing some fundraising to offset the 275 per student?
Where'd she go? She says she's gonna be here to answer questions.
Well, you can let me know later on.
I think she does a little bit of fundraising with the, I think she does some sales and stuff like that. Yeah, donut sales um to offset the cost, but I think that's what she's... There we go.
Earlier in the year, I believe they also had a calendar fundraiser where each day they would, you know, people could donate. So they they're doing it.
Thank you.
I think we're trying to offset it as much as possible.
Right. It's it's, I just don't like it to be cost prohibitive so much for people. Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all. Hope to see you Friday at 1:00.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um fees, community fees, yes.
All right, everyone, I'm back. Um at this time, I am standing to um make a recommendation that all the fees for Dinwiddie High School and Rwanda Technical Center are um accepted. I do have um a document for you. Um it's basically self-explanatory. All these fees are reoccurring. So these are, we only have one new fee. So all these fees are reoccurring, but we only have one new fee that comes from culinary arts. And I would like to say that all CTE uh fees um really are about student safety and these students actually take these items with them. And we do have students who actually take them with them to use for their work, their actual jobs. So I'm asking that you approve uh the student fees for Dinwiddie High School and Rwanda Technical Center at this time.
And I, as I looked at them earlier before the meeting, I I really um, you know, most of them are for things that they they need for jobs in these areas. Um, you know, the culinary, with the shoes and the hat, that's something they need. It's is required on the job. And of course, um, you know, they lose a lot paying for it and losing books and those sort of things. I mean, it's it's natural. Do we have a process if there's a student that's uh absolutely unable and especially the culinary and Rwanda?
We do work with those students and we we basically, um our teachers will notify us. Sometimes the students will come directly to us. But we do have a process that we do work with those students who have those needs.
Questions about the fees, anyone? If not, uh we need a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the 2024, 2025 Dinwiddie High School and Rwanda Technical Center student fees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That does pass. Thank you so much for that work. Special education comprehensive review. Dr. Clay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I do believe you have a copy of the proposal that we are going to discuss for approval this evening. And there is a PowerPoint as well. So I can't remember which month, but a couple of months ago, Dr. Weston, when she presented a new budget, talked about this special education review. So since then, we have gone through this process um asking for proposals. So that is the piece that I'm going to discuss this evening. So to to start off with, just what is our special education program look like? What does that look like? Um services are provided to students who have qualified to receive such services through a structured referral and evaluation process. The mission of Dinwiddie County Public Schools Special Education Department is to provide a planned program, there we go, of instructional and other related services to help schools meet the unique needs of identified students and their families. So currently, just what does special education look like a little deeper for us? We currently serve 639 students through our special education program. 27 of those are homeschooled, but we do maintain eligibility for those students. All Dinwiddie County Public Schools staff serve our special education students, every single staff member, because first, they are general education students. But we do have 102 special education staff members who are trained to provide specially designed instruction and services. And that includes teachers, paraprofessionals, social workers, school psychologists, speech pathologists, occupational therapists, and other district staff in that number. So why a comprehensive review? So let me just say, checkups are healthy. Do you go to the doctor just when you're sick? I hope not. You go to be proactive and preventive, right? So checkups are just a normal thing that we should be doing. Um a fresh set of eyes is going to look at our practices differently. A fresh perspective can catch some blind spots that because we're in it every day, we don't see. So we do think there's power and value in just someone from the outside looking at our practices um and our procedures. So that is very, a very good thing. Our special education students are vulnerable. It's a vulnerable population. You know, we always say all of our students are vulnerable, but this is an especially vulnerable population. And we want to ensure, as we do with every child, that we are doing everything possible to move our students forward, to make sure they have successful uh positive outcomes. So that is very important to us. So the goals of the review, I'm not going to read that to you verbatim, but this is part of the proposal we put out. You know, what are the goals of this? So we want to evaluate the structure and procedures of our program, basically, is what the first one is about. Are we implementing things the right way? How are we monitoring the effectiveness of our processes? Um it's going to look at the adequacy of our people, our staff, right? Do we have um the staff that we need? Um, you know, we were talking earlier today about our return on investment. So we spend, I feel like it's 6.2 million on um special education. Are we getting the return on investment that we need? Are we doing things in the right way? Um analyzing the implementation of services, um evidence-based practices, when you look at what's happening in our classrooms, and evaluating the effectiveness of communication strategies. So all of our stakeholders are informed, especially our parents and guardians. Are we doing that in the right way? So just a little bit about the process. The request for proposals was issued on December 12th, 2023. Seven proposals were received. Um there was a committee that came together to examine those proposals. And the committee did believe that only one vendor truly was qualified to provide the level of detail that we are asking for, and that was American Educational Consultants. So a notice of intent to award was issued on January 31st. And upon your approval this evening, uh American Educational Consultants will schedule an onsite visit and begin the review process. So they'll begin pretty much immediately um after approval. I will say, the committee did interview them um through a virtual session. And after the interview process, the committee was even more just sold on these, this is the right group because they are educators and they've done this work before and they're very knowledgeable about the work. So the review process for this consultant will be a multi-tiered approach. They will review three to five years worth of data. They will look at IEPs. They will look at those service minutes, accommodations. There will be some structured interviews that could be staff, principals. It could be parents. It will not be students. Classroom observations will occur because, again, these are general education students first. So are we doing what we need to do in our classrooms? A review of programs, that's like, what are we using for math? What are we using for reading? How are we doing intervention? And a review of a wide variety of other data, like our progress monitoring, our assessments, how we communicate. Um in their proposal, they have said they can complete this work in 12 to 14 weeks. About 130 hours of work is what they estimate. Most of this work will happen onsite. Um so the project should be completed by the beginning of May, and they will present their final report during a May or June board meeting. We are going to ask that they present the report to our Special Education Department first as well. Um this will allow us to consider their recommendations so we can plan for the 24, 25 school year. When you go through a process like this and you get information, then you have to use that information to other things we need to revise or do differently. So this evening, we are recommending awarding a contract to American Education Consultants in the amount of $52,090. This project will be funded by utilizing part of the additional state funds approved in the amended fiscal 23, 24 budget. Any questions?
You have questions about the comprehensive review or awarding of the contract?
I just have a question about uh how close are we as far as the SOQ numbers that we get from the state, what they recommend for special education staff and what we have?
We surpass those numbers.
Okay, right, right.
In a great way.
Okay, awesome.
Yes, we do.
And it's good for our students.
Yeah.
Bad for our budget.
Yes. Yeah, but it's what students need. Right. So it's a great question. It is what students need, and we do surpass that based on student need.
Right.
Um the other piece, and just in case you had a question about the data and pieces like that, we will sign a confidentiality agreement with American Educational Consultants and a data release that's pretty normal in these situations.
Any other questions about that? And if not, we need a motion to approve the American Consultants for the contract.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the um the contract for the American Consultant Company.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you so much for your information.
Thank you. And I'm also next on the agenda.
All right.
So I'm just giving you, have some notes about calendar revisions and a copy of the current school calendar. So you will have that.
Thank you.
All right. So your sheet that you have has a little bit of background on calendar building based on the requirements that we have to adhere to. So um the original calendar had 175 student days, which is 1,050 instructional hours. Um we are required to have 990 instructional hours in our calendar. That is a requirement that we have to sign off on at the end of the year saying we have done that. That gave us 60 bank hours, which is about 10 days. All right. So thus far, um we, the board did vote in December to change December 21st to a wellness day. So that every time we have a change, it subtracts from our hours, okay? And then because we have chosen to go with hours, as most divisions around us do, instead of days, anytime we have a late arrival day, like because of weather, or early release, that subtracts from our bank hours. So you can see kind of a list there of some weather-related closings, January 9th. Um uh we were an early release, January 10th, no school, January 11th and 17th, two-hour delays that all subtracts from our bank time. So that was 19 bank hours used, and that left, leaves us with 41 bank hours or extra hours. So we are recommending two revisions to the 23, 24 calendar this evening that do need your approval. One is to change May 24th, 2024 to a holiday, a student-teacher holiday. That is the Friday before Memorial Day. So that would give staff and students a four-day weekend for that holiday. So that is a subtraction of six hours, okay? And then the next recommendation is to change May 31st, 2024, to a teacher workday, and that is due to graduation. So we, the committee created this calendar before the high school had a graduation date because there's a contract process that has to go along with that. And so the date that they were able um to secure is May 31st, which was the last day for students. But now that that is graduation, uh it will need to be a teacher workday to allow all the high school staff to attend. Plus, there are other staff in the county that do attend graduation. That would make May 30th the last day for students. And that would leave us 29 bank hours, which is a little over four days. So we still have a a little bit of time in case um the lovely weather would want to give us one or two snow days in March or something like that. We still have a little bit of bank time there. Any questions?
Questions from the board?
No, I don't have any questions, but thank you for explaining the subtraction of the hours because sometimes I go to the other meetings and I see we're constantly changing for something. So each time we take a, we early dismiss a long late start or something.
That's right. And I appreciate Ms. Robinson-Williams because I don't know where she went, but she helps me to make sure the calculations are correct for that. So we do need a recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. Um and no other questions. We do need a motion to adopt this for the calendar changes.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt this new, this revised calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And it is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. The SBA Services Agreement.
Yes. Um so you know that we have an agreement with the Virginia School Board Association. They do provide us with uh policy updates that are aligned with the state and federal um federal laws. Um and so we do enter into an agreement with them every year to um continue with this process. And um this is the agreement for this year um to make certain that we are maintaining uh up-to-date policies. And so I believe, Bonnie, we do need their approval to continue that agreement.
Are there any questions on that agreement or anything?
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept the BSBA Policy Services Agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, the motion is carried. Superintendent Matters.
Yes, well, you first are going to begin this evening with a CTE uh program update. I believe Mr. Torres is, yes.
Okay. Back up again. Not as late as I thought it would be. It's pretty good. Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, this is February's um CTE month, so an appropriate time to um provide the board with an annual update of the CTE program. Of course, um you know, where we're at now, but probably more importantly, um some of our vision for the future. Um I wanted to start out with just a few quotes that uh that I think apply to what we do in CTE. And um and I'll kind of explain why. So um the first one, they are, and they all have something in common, which you'll probably see as I go along. Albert Einstein, he's a smart guy. Um the only source of knowledge is experience. And then um John Dewey, he was a uh uh I guess nowadays we'd call him an influencer. He was in education in the um mid 20th century and he was um, he was big on what's called pragmatism. So teaching things that are practical, right? That apply. Between the two wars, World War I and World War II, there was a need for practical education. Madam Chair, I move that we adopt this new, this revised calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And it is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. The SBA Services Agreement.
Yes, so you know that we have an agreement with the Virginia School Board Association. They do provide us with policy updates that are aligned with the state and federal, federal laws. And so we do enter into an agreement with them every year to continue with this process, and this is the agreement for this year, to make certain that we are maintaining up-to-date policies. And so I believe, Bonnie, we do need their approval to continue that agreement.
Are there any questions on that agreement or anything?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the SBA Policy Services Agreement.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, the motion is carried. Superintendent Mattos.
Yes, well, you first are going to begin this evening with a CTE program update.
Okay. Back up again. Not as late as I thought it would be. It's pretty good. Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, this is February's CTE month, so an appropriate time to provide the board with an annual update of the CTE program. Of course, you know, where we're at now, but probably more importantly, some of our vision for the future. I wanted to start out with just a few quotes that, that I think apply to what we do in CTE, and, and I'll kind of explain why. So the first one, they all, and they all have something in common, which you'll probably see as I go along. Albert Einstein, he's a smart guy. The only source of knowledge is experience. And then John Dewey, he was a, I guess nowadays we'd call him an influencer. He was in education mid-20th century, and he was, he was big on what's called pragmatism. So teaching things that are practical, right? That apply. Between the two wars, World War I and World War II, there was a need for practical education in, in America. And so this quote, "We do not learn from experience. We learn from reflecting on," there's the word again, "experience." I just like this quote, I can apply this to a few times in my life, probably. While it's wise to learn from, from experience, it's wiser to learn from the experience of others, without a doubt. What does this have to do with CTE? Well, our teachers, you know, the neat thing about CTE teachers is a lot of them are career switchers, right? And so they bring with them experience from the private sector or from other careers that they've had, and they bring that diversity and that experience into our classrooms, which only benefits our students. Mr. Walker, you'll recognize this name. Losing is a learning experience. It teaches you humility, teaches you to work harder. It's also a powerful motivator. We compete in CTE. It's a big part of CTE, right, Monty? Our T, our students are out and about. They are competing against other students around the region, around the state, and even around the country. And in, in here in Dinwiddie, we like to win, but there are times when we prepare, we do our best, and we still fall a little short. And that's important for students because it teaches resilience, right? It teaches grit because things aren't always going to go your way, and you have to know how to bounce back and, and press on. So here are our CTE program areas. These are our in-house programs. This is DMS and DHS. And then in parentheses underneath each program area, I included the, the enrollment, the 2023-24 enrollment. And the, the programs with the asterisks beside them, we actually have courses offered at the middle school and high school. There is one mistake on this slide. We do not offer family consumer science to middle school, but we offer agriculture courses, business, and IT, and military science this year, which I'll touch on a little later, and tech ed at the middle school. The other, I think, point worth noting here is that all, in all of our program areas, we have multiple courses so that students can have a completer sequence, okay? So a completer, that's CTE lingo for we have got multiple courses in each pathway. We want completers. We don't want students to take one course. We want students to dive in and take the upper-level courses. So to get to upper-level courses, you have to take prerequisite lower-level courses. So it's very important to offer program sequences. Here's our current, our '23-'24 enrollment. Mr. Garnes, we do not have 2,800 students at the high school, of course, but this is duplicated enrollments. This is our total CTE enrollment. So if I'm a marketing student and I'm in marketing semester one, and I'm in fashion marketing semester two, of course, I'm, I'm counted twice on the same student. But this is the total enrollment we have at DMS, DHS. You can see our CTE program is, is quite large. So aside from my in-house programs, we have, of course, we have our students have the opportunity to attend Rowanee Technical Center, okay? Where we have a whole nother set of programs, techni, trades-focused. So you can see our Rowanee programs listed here, and on the next slide, I've included our enrollments at Rowanee. So we, we actually get nine slots at Rowanee. We, we share Rowanee with, it's Regional Technical Center, with Prince George and Sussex. We get nine slots, and Prince George gets eight slots, and Sussex gets three slots in each course per, per year. So our goal, obviously, is to maximize enrollment. You can see a lot of our programs are, are maxed out. Our CNA Nurse Aid Program and the Electricity Program actually have waiting lists. And then we know, of course, that we have some work to do in some other programs, and that's been a focus that we, we had, we've had over the past year or two, is working with Rowanee to make sure students know about some of the other programs. I will say that plumbing is brand-new. This is the first year, and so it's actually not, and that, this is actually not a bad turnout for, for plumbing in year one, a brand-new program. So we've got in-house programs at DHS and DMS. We've got programs that students can attend at Rowanee. Well, we've also got programs that students can attend at Brightpoint, okay? These are called concurrent programs because students are earning high school and college credit. I've included the enrollments beside each program. And the first four programs with the asterisks beside them, they are actually part of the Tobacco Commission grant, so students attend, take those classes, they don't pay for the So when we think about the future and, and new CTE programming, in CTE, there's really three main criteria that we have to think about. You know, first and foremost is the labor market. You know, moving forward, we don't want to introduce new career and technical education programs if there's not careers out there in the future, right? That just doesn't make sense. So there's multiple data points we can use for that. The Weld and Cooper Center at UVA provides labor market data annually and for our region, so it's very much region-specific, and it's very current. And of course, we have a CTE Advisory Board that's comprised of industry partners that provide us feedback as well. The second piece is student interest. You know, when we have to have students that are willing to take the courses when we think about introducing new, new courses or new programs. And then lastly, resources. CTE, CTE, new CTE programs do take substantial resources. Generally, they require space, of course, but also equipment, and probably most importantly is expertise, finding the teachers that are qualified to teach in these programs. So college and career readiness, I just want to provide you with some numbers. Of course, you have this in, in front of you. Industry certifications are, are a big focus of ours here, as well as CTE completers. So like that number from last year, 208, that is right at, just over, actually, 70% of the senior class last year was a CTE completer. Work-based learning experiences is becoming more and more important. So I'm going to go to the next slide, and then I'll kind of explain why and tie, tie that, tie them together. So the college and career and civic readiness index, so we know it is CCCRI, okay? Right now, that's accreditation standard. So what that means is all of our students, all of our seniors, when they graduate, they need one of three things, okay? They need an AP or dual-enrollment class, or they need a CTE sequence, right? Plus a credential, both, or a work-based learning experience, okay? And the goal was 85%. You can see last year, we met the goal at 85.95%, or 86%. And it's only going to become more important because I know that there's talk at this point about this potentially becoming an actual graduation requirement. So it's very, very important. So I mentioned the slide before, work-based learning experiences. Last year, we had 167. That number's probably going to be double, if not triple this year, and I'll tell you why. Because when we were looking at the CCCRI numbers for our senior class from last year, we noticed there was a group of students who were missing, and that was the fine arts kids, right? Because they're not taking CTE classes. And you can see that out of the three things that our students need, CTE is, is clearly, we have 221 students that met CCCRI because of CTE, okay? But yet we have fine arts kids that aren't taking CTE, okay? So, so what we did is, you know, if you think about fine arts, there, there's a, there's a high-quality work-based learning experience in, in Virginia called School-Based Enterprise, where a student organization is creating a product, and they are, they are producing a product whether for the school or for, you know, the community. Well, fine arts is producing a product, right? Their product are the productions that they do every year, right? Their product is the Fine Arts Festival. Their, their products are the, are the concerts. So long story short, we met with the fine arts folks over the summer, and we were able to put the structures and documentation in place to be able to meet the requirements of a school-based enterprise for our fine arts kids. And in the first semester, thanks to the work of our fine arts department, we actually had 100 fine arts students that got credit for work-based learning, so we can capture that group of kids. Here's our fall testing update. Two things I want to mention on this that I think are worth noting, very proud of all of it. One, the ASVAB, so that's the, that's the Armed Forces Absitude Test. That number's twice what it was last year. It's 14 students passed the ASVAB this fall. And then the second one is ServSafe Manager. That's 13 students that passed ServSafe Manager out of 13 students that took ServSafe Manager. It's a 100% pass rate. Now, that's a legitimate industry certification. If you want to work in a restaurant as a manager, or chef, or hotel, or nursing home, you have to have that. And if you go in the back of any restaurant or hotel, into a chef or a manager, kitchen manager's office, they'll have that ServSafe Manager hanging proudly on the wall. So it's really neat that our kids were able to get that. That's a testament to Chef Capatchy and her hard work with that group of students. Some program updates, and you all have these in the folders I'm getting ready to hand out. I provided the CTE newsletters, which explains these in detail. I wanted to just highlight two of these real quick. One is the JROTC program expansion. We offered it in the eighth grade for the first time this year. I think we had 18 students take eighth graders in JROTC in the fall, and 17 now. And the JROTC enrollment is, is as high as it's been since 2017 this year. And I also would like to add to that, that we currently have a drill team and a raider team practicing for JROTC, and they're getting ready to, to start competing this spring. And our color guard numbers are larger than they've been in a while. So we're really excited about what they're doing in that program. The eighth graders, or the middle school. A big focus of ours this year has been the middle school. We know middle school students need a vision, right? Research will show you that if they have a vision, if they have a plan for the future, then they are more engaged. Their attendance is better, okay? So we've really focused on the middle school. We took 170 students to Rowanee in the fall, and it was just awesome to see, to go on that trip because a lot of the students didn't even know the Rowanee programs were available, or were there for them. And then this is actually kind of humorous. So Brightpoint invited us to bring our eighth graders to Brightpoint Community College next Friday, and, and then I called, and so we did it. We set up, we did a little presentation of the eighth graders. We sent the permission slips home. We got the teachers on board and got a plan together. And I called Brightpoint on, on Friday and told them that we had 250 eighth graders signed up, I mean, with permission slips turned in, and they, they couldn't believe it. They're like, you're kidding. And I said, no, I'm not kidding. We said, bring our eighth graders, so we bring our eighth graders. So that trip is actually the 23rd. If anybody is available, we do need chaperones, so, yeah.
I volunteered to stay.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, we do need chaperones. Again, just some more updates. These are in your folder. I would, would like to highlight DECA and the great job that Ms. Nivens and Ms. Gravely are doing. We have 14 students that'll go compete at the state competition. That's in Virginia Beach, the weekend of March 1st. Some new, some new programs, we've actually already implemented tech ed at DMS. We've got inventions, innovations at the sixth grade, in the sixth grade, and then introduction to technology and engineering in the eighth grade. And we've got Mr. Hawkins down there that's doing a great job. You know, we didn't even have a, a tech ed lab this time last year. Now we have a fully functioning program with lab. So it's just another pathway for those middle school kids. Z-Space is amazing. I'll have to bring it once we get them really functional, but it's actually, it's audio, augmented reality labs. It's labs that are literally used in early medical schools and vet schools. But our health science program and our vet science program, they've got labs sitting in the high school right now. We've got 20 for health science and 10 for vet science. And our student, our teachers are, are receiving their final training on March 5th from, from the company that, from Z-Space, yeah, to be able to implement that in those two, in those two programs. And then GOTech is excellent, very exciting. We're part of a regional consortium with other schools we're getting ready to receive. In fact, we just started ordering $200,000 worth of equipment for the middle school, which will be set up as stations, as a GOTech lab. It'll include engineering, health science, programming, and robotics stations, all specific to the, to job needs in this region. Our middle school teachers are going on March 5th to C-CAM, which is in Prince George, to receive the start of their training, to be able to, to learn how to use this equipment.
What courses will that be?
That'll actually, that's going to be implemented in our career investigations course, the middle school, to start, which is, yeah, which is a seventh-grade course that every seventh grader takes. So they all get a chance to, and we can actually expand out from that, but that's where we're going to start. Just a couple of things I wanted to highlight and touch on. Works, you know, our work-based learning is, is, is big in, in the county. We have a few different programs. Work-study are my students that are actually working in the high school at training stations. And actually, it's exciting, we have a couple of them working at the middle school this semester with Ms. Walker. So we've been able to expand that program a little bit. Right now, I have 13 work-study students between the high school and middle school. Job shadowing is ongoing, you know, it's very important. If kids think they want to get, go into a career, they actually go see what it might be like, you know, at those workplaces. So we do job shadowing throughout the school year. And then, of course, we have a great partnership with the county here in Dinwiddie and the teen staff program and the summer work-based learning program. We partner with the county to put our students in actual, in workplaces throughout the county. Teen staff is during the school year, so we have teen staff students working now. And then summer work-based learning is in the summer. Some career exploration events. Of course, Industry Day is, is in the fall each year, and that's a big event for us. We just had the Reverse Career Fair last Friday at Brightpoint, and we took 23 of our seniors. We ended up having 30 employers there. These are seniors that are looking to enter the workforce, you know, when they graduate. Of course, I mentioned the trips, the, the DMS trips. So there's some upcoming dates of interest, just, you know, for the school board to check out. The last thing I would say is moving forward, as we continually look to improve ways to make our, our programs more hands-on, you know, nothing's ever perfect. We have to get better and more relevant. Continue to advocate for practical CTE programs and practices. I think it's very important that we continue to build partnerships with the private sector and that are beneficial to our students. And then, you know, we can do all of this, but we have to make sure our students and families know what we're doing. It's very, very important, too. That's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do you have any questions of Mr. George?
I don't have any question for Mr. George, but I guess an observation. Last week, was it last week, we had Family University at, at, at the high school, and I went into Mr. George's presentation, and they're doing great things with what he just explained this afternoon, so I think it's really good, and it's good for Dinwiddie, it's good for all of us.
Yep, thank you.
And I, I also just wanted to say, coming from a student who loves CTE, I love hearing about everything that we're doing, especially how we are gearing towards the middle school and making sure that they are experiencing all of the different things that are a part of CTE, because there's so much that is a part to it. And I just am so excited to see how it continues to expand and to see other students explore it and enjoy it just as much as I do, so, yes.
I have a question, Mr. George.
Yes, sir.
The enrollment numbers that you gave us for Rowanee, understood the masonry was significant. Is that due to a lack of interest, and is that pretty normal?
I, I, you know, I think so. It's something that we're definitely working with Rowanee to try to make sure that, you know, masonry is not just laying bricks.
Right.
Masonry, they're doing, they're doing tile work in that class. They're doing landscape stones. I mean, there's things that you can do in masonry that are skilled.
So how, how does our enrollment compare to the other?
About the same.
About the same.
Yeah, it's, I would say it's the lowest enrollment.
It's the lowest.
Yeah, and we know that.
It's been low for a couple of years now, and I, I don't know why that is, or they don't advertise it or make it fluff it up, but the fact that they're being able to lay tile up to, to, to my eyebrows, because that's a, obviously, and they're replacing, overlaying the tile all around that building that the students are. But there was some discussion about hooking that up with some modules or something else in the, in the masonry, and then they'd have a module of something else to go with it, try to, in the skills area, in the buildings trades area.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you so much. The Improvement Association.
We have, Mr. Tyler is going to come forward and talk to us about the Improvement Association and the great things happening there. And Ms. Kelly as well.
And Ms. Kelly. Yes. Madam Chair, board and members of the school board, your dedicated and caring superintendent, Dr. Wesson, and of course, esteemed guests you here today. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, listen, I want you to know that day is a national holiday because of my birthday.
Happy birthday!
Thank you very much, thank you very much. So it's a national holiday, so if I slip out after this, my wife is waiting for me and my family downtown Petersburg, so, but it's good to be here. My name is Rufus Tyler. I'm the CO and exec director of the Improvement Association. I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present some exciting news tonight regarding your Head Start program here in Dinwiddie County. I have with us some, some hard-working ladies for my Head Start program with just Dan, and our administrative team, that are some individual here who work so hard in Dinwiddie. I just want to let you know we appreciate you so much. For those who don't know, the Improvement Association is federally funded, state-funded, and local government-funded. And we serve the local, the Sussex, Sarajevo, Greensville, Emporia, Brunswick. And we serve the local, the Sussex, Sarajevo, Greensville, Emporia, Brunswick, and of course, we serve Dinwiddie County. The agency has over 56 years of experience in successfully operating initiative to empower families and becoming self-sufficient, not just during the school year, but later on in life. Some of the Improvement Association initiative include workforce development, whereby we work with families who enrolled in our Head Start program, have them find employment to go back to school, to get their education, or GED, or whatever, with housing assistance. That's a big issue, believe it or not, because some families have issues and high eviction rate. So we step in to make sure that they're not evicted, because when they're evicted, the children can't come to school, kids don't come to school, they can't learn, and affects the education status of our school divisions. We have parents as teachers, whereby we have teachers on our staff who actually go out to the home to teach the children from birth up until three years old. And of course, we have the Head Start program, which we have been operating over 30-some years here in Dinwiddie. And you know, I was privileged, when I came, I saw a lot of Head Start babies who was in the program, but I also met, I was told, two original people who have started the Head Start program in Dinwiddie, and that is David Roberts, all right? I didn't know that until tonight, at Sunnyside, and Joanne Branch. I don't know, she might be hit the gun, but I was pleased just to meet some of the original people who had the vision to really push the Head Start program forward. And we're excited because our Head Start program has been designated one of the most successful program in Southside Virginia. So I'm, I'm excited about that. But listen, I'm going to have Ms. Kelly to come and give the other good news about our Head Start program and the, and of course, you have, and give some other updates. This is our Head Start already.
Good evening to the board. I would like to start off by saying thank you for everything that you do for the Improvement Association as a whole. It is truly appreciated and acknowledged for your dedication and your continuous support. Also to the superintendent, we would like to say thank you as well. On this evening, I just want to present to you some of our fall data that we have concerning the Dinwiddie Head Start. As you know, Head Start is a comprehensive early childhood development program that focuses on providing comprehensive services to the family as a whole. So in Dinwiddie, we have 60 scholars, and just to let you know, we operate that Dinwiddie class behind the Southside Elementary School there, where we have four classrooms, four teachers, and four teacher assistants, four support staff that consist of a family community partnership coordinator. She goes inside of the home, she also complete home visits and welfare checks. We have a compliance coordinator there who makes sure that we are running the program to fidelity in all of our programs. We have our program specialist, Ms. Maholic, who is also the supervisor there, and we have, of course, myself, I am there to provide support as well, along with our health coordinator, who goes in to make sure students are up to date on their physicals, are up to date on their dentals, their growth checks, and different things of that nature. This school year alone, we have already conducted 120 home visits, and those are the mandated home visits. Head Start is required to go into the homes just to provide some additional support within the homes. And the great thing about our home visits is, we don't just focus on the Head Start student, we ask, if there's a public school student in that home as well, we also ask questions to those public school students, questions such as, "What is your future? Are you attending school? Do you need some additional support in school?" So at those home visits, we want to make sure that we encompass the whole family.
And, and if I may mention, that we think that's important because one of the issues in general in school division is dropouts, or people not coming to school on a regular basis. So we try to reinforce the fact how important it is for, even though they're, they might be older children, if they're in the house, or why they need to go to school.
We conduct, we have conducted about 60 parent-teacher conferences. We're coming up on our second parent-teacher conference, because we do supposed to have two per year, so we're coming up in March conducting the second, our parent-teacher conference. And these are just mandated conferences and home visits. Now, we do have the option, and we do have the agreements that if there's additional support, we can go as needed as well. We have had one field trip and two community events thus far, and we have assisted families with comprehensive services to include food, utility, mortgage, and rental assistance. Here we have our curriculum outcome with teacher strategies goal, and our curriculum that we use is creative curriculum, where it focuses on academic along with exploration. And we focus on the area of social, emotional, physical, and motor, language, cognitive, literacy, and math. And these are the fall scores, and as you can see, the blue represent those that came in below, orange represent those that are meeting, and red represent those that are exceeding. So after reviewing the data, what we decided to do was implement some more trainings within the curriculum, so that we can make sure and ensure that our students are kindergarten-ready. They're, at the end of the school year, either they're going to kindergarten, or if they even return back for a second year of Head Start, we want to make sure that they are prepared. And the great thing about the curriculum is it also provides ways to where we can continue to educate during the summer while school is out. It does give access to different documents and different activities that can be utilized during the summer as well, just to make sure they do not use that, lose that knowledge.
This is pre-test, them coming into you.
Yes, so within the first 45 days of school, we have to complete screenings, and one of the screenings is their developmental screening. So within the first 45 days, this is where they come into the program. And then we also retest during the winter, so we'll look at that data come March, and then we do the spring, where we will come back and give you that whole school year data around June. Here we have our class scores, and class is a measuring tool that measures the interactions that occur within the classroom, much teacher, student, student, students. And there are three domains of class that we look at as observers. The Improvement Association, we have approximately five class observers, where they go into the classroom and they look at the interactions in the classroom and the ways of emotional support. Is it a positive or negative climate in the classroom? Are, are the teachers implementing teacher sensitivity? Is there autonomy in the classroom where students have the ability to maneuver through the classroom within their own progress? We also look at classroom organization, is productivity happening in the classroom? Is there instructional learning formats happening in the classroom? And what is the behavior like in the classroom? And instructional support looks at the concept development, quality of feedback, and language modeling that lets us know, is learning happening in the classroom at a higher order thinking? So here you see the data for the Improvement Association and nationwide. And what we did this year is we decided to give the data for external observations. So there's two observations, there internally, which is what we do as an organization, and then there's externally, where teachers don't come in and do the observation. And what we did was, since Dinwiddie was allowed to have four external observations, which is a little different this year, so we decided to share the data of the external observation, so that you can see what those who have came in to see the classroom, what they are saying. And as you can see in the data, we have exceeded the nationwide class scores for our fall data. And one of the things that we did is we increased the amount of trainings that we do per year. So every Fourth Friday, we have a professional development where those training focuses on areas within class observations in the curriculum. Here we have our Virginia Literacy, Language and Literacy screener, which focuses on the phonological awareness for our students, both four and three-year-olds, where you see blue is emerging, orange is growing, and gray is strong. So this is the data for letter names, letter sounds, syllables, and beginning sounds, and matching for our fall data. And we will collect data again during the spring and share that in February as well. I'm sorry, in June as well. Another main component for Head Start is parent engagement. We want the parents and the fam, not just parents, but family as a whole, to be involved with the child's learning. So there's different ways that they can participate in that learning experience. One is by making sure that when we conduct home visits, that they are there, so that we can do the home visits. Parent center activities, this is monthly, where the parents come into the centers and they do some type of activity, whether it's gift wrapping, paintings, mental health awareness, financial awareness, any activity that the parents choose the month prior for the incoming month. We do not do homework, however, we do do take-home activities where the parent and the child can complete those activities together, to include going on a nature walk, identifying license plates, or something of that nature that we require for them to do. They can come and volunteer in the classroom, and just making sure that their students' attendance and their health and their oral health is up to date within the classroom. And we also do have our policy council, which is a governing, one of our governing bodies along with the Board of Directors, and the policy council have the similar to a school board, and, but it is made up of parents, community representatives, and past parents as well. And we did have a parent here who unfortunately got a message that she needed to leave in emergency, but she asked if I could read her statement, if so, if it pleases the board, I would like to do that at this time. And she stated, "I am a strong advocate for the Head Start program due to its significant impact on early childhood education and development. As a parent, I deeply appreciate the Head Start program for its invaluable support in nurturing and educating young children, setting a strong foundation for my daughter's future success. What I like most about the program is not only do they serve my child, but my entire family as well. This is my daughter's second year in Head Start, and she has grown in the areas of academic, social-emotional development, and overall confidence in her experience through life. As a Head Start parent, my experience has been incredibly rewarding and fulfilling, witnessing firsthand the positive impact the Improvement Association has had on my child's growth and development." And that was from Ms. Sampson, and she did agree that if you have any questions, we can share her, her contact information, if you would like to speak with her personally. At this time, I welcome any questions or comments.
Does anyone on the board have questions about the, the program that they're offering, or?
I think it's an exciting program. I was typing down, taking some notes, I'm also writing an email to you, so I'll be reaching out to you shortly, because it's exciting, and, you know, hearing about the approach and everything that you use with students when it comes to, you know, mental and social and emotional competency, I mean, that's universally needed. So I'm, I'm excited to see that that's something that you're focused on in the schools, and especially with kids that young.
Yeah.
It's really important to, you know, build those roots so that when they go off to elementary school, middle school, and high school, they've already got a very strong developed skill set there, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I would also like to say, we would like to invite you to come out to view the Head Start program, and you can see firsthand what's going on actually in the classroom. One of the things, and I will admit, this year we have some challenges with transportation, things of the nature, but I think the superintendent, we, we worked that out. But the other issue is that the federal government has approved of us having an advisory board for the Head Start program in Dinwiddie. And so we're in the process of forming the advisory board, I know the superintendent that she will serve on it, and some other individual in the room has said they will serve, not calling their names, but we will be meeting, hopefully, and anyone else want to serve, just, just contact our office to provide guidance for the program to ensure we continue to provide quality services. We think that's so, so important. So with that, if you have any questions for us, we're more than happy to answer those. Red looks good in Dinwiddie. I'm a red suit next to him, right?
It's a national holiday.
It's a nat, my, national holiday, red, right?
That's right.
But thank you so much for all that you do, and I know being elected official for years is not an easy job, but it's hard work, you know, as they say, that some things people might remember, and some things will not, but they will remember the way in your commitment to children, because that is our future, and we value what you do. We thank you so much.
Thank you for your information. We appreciate it.
And I think she has some goodies for you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
For, for us students.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
I'm going, I'm going now. Happy wife, happy life. I love it.
That's right. That's right.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Appreciate you. Thank you to your staff, too, for attending. We appreciate it. At this time, we have updates for the ARGS, Rewani, and Code RVA. We have members who serve on those boards as well, and first we'll go with the ARGS, Ms. Benjamin.
Yes, I did attend ARGS on Thursday for their board meeting. It wasn't a very long meeting, and as you know, they're always talking about ways they can preserve the building, I call it pack it up. Right now, they're having a lot of water issues, but they found a company who's able to get their work done under $5,000. So they're going to be working on that and painting the windows in the atrium. As you come out, the, the windows look really bad, so they're going to paint them to look like the windows on the other side. But the most, one of the most important things, I think, that when I go to these meetings, sometimes I don't hear Dinwiddie students' name called, and on the other day, we have Alex Rose, who's from Dinwiddie, and he's in the running finals for, to a scholarship, which he could get up to $12,500. So that made me feel really good, I said, "Oh, yeah, Dinwiddie is here," you know. So I finally got to know that our student is, they are doing well there. Today, they had their Black History Program. On the 15th, it's going to be the senior recital. On the 20th, they're going to do a dance performance. On the 26th through the 29th, VDOE will be doing their evaluation, and Dr. Tenia feel like they would do very well with that. On March 13th, they have a spring show, and also, all the students in the locality that feed into that school, the sixth graders will be invited to come to see, to take a look at the school. And on March, March 5th, is a student teacher holiday. That's Election Day, but Dr. Tenia said, "Election is not going to take place in her school," she doesn't think at this time, "but the schools that feed into ARGS are taking the holiday." So that's why they're going to use, it's going to be a holiday there, too. And that, this ends my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Rewani, Mr. Walker and myself served there, and Mr. Walker's going to provide the report.
Yeah, I want to take this opportunity because our partnership with the Rewani program obviously is a big part of what Mr. George does. And so I just want to say that I've only been doing this for two months now, and so far, the highlight of all these meetings for me has been the CTE presentations. I really enjoy the presentations on that stuff, and so I'm realizing that what a pleasure it is to be able to serve on this Rewani board, because I, I believe personally that one of the biggest problems our nation is facing right now is student loan debt, and I think that what's happening through the CTE programs is a big part of the solution. So that being said, though, very much similar to what Mrs. Benjamin said about the ARGS building, it seems that the age of the facility over there is a big problem, and so a lot of the meeting revolved around that. But this was our first meeting with the new board, and so it was a restructuring meeting. And so I am pleased to be able to tell you that that Mrs. Pittman was, uh, voted in as our chair for that board. And, uh, Dr. Weston was appointed as the superintendent of record for our board over there at Rewonti. So, um, I get to ride along with them and, uh, just, uh, kinda ride their coattails, so to speak. But, um, one of the major issues that they're facing over at Rewonti right now, um, is related to maintenance, uh, and cleaning of the facility. They're understaffed in that area. But, uh, I think we discussed the plan to take some of the funding that was set aside for that right now, buy some equipment that can be used next year when they are able to fully staff, uh, that. So that'll happen. Saw some, or heard from some of the instructors there. Really exciting to hear what's happening, especially with the welding program. So, um, I was very impressed by that. And I, just as a final note, on my way into the meeting, I ran into a Dinwiddie High School graduate, Timmy Freeman, who is, uh, an instructor there. So we're, we're in the school not just as students, but also as instructors there. So I'm looking forward to serving over there at Rewonti the next few years alongside Ms. Pittman and Dr. Weston, so.
Thank you. Uh, Code RVA update, Dr. Pearson.
Thank you, Ms. Pittman. Um, I attended my first regional school board meeting at Code RVA, and I thought it was really special that the director of the school brought down a Dinwiddie student for Dr. Weston and I to speak with on his special project that he was in the middle of designing. And because it is a coding school, like computer technology school, he was designing a webpage, which I understand webpages, but I never designed one. So when he started talking about the coding and all the different things he was doing, it just sort of went. But it was quite interesting. But I would say that particularly the principal of the high school would be interested to see 300 students milling about in a school. Very few classrooms, great big open area concepts, and they're sitting there just working. It was fantastic. The other thing of interest is that there was a press conference held between Code RVA and Virginia Commonwealth University, where they have announced that any student who graduates from Code RVA who meets the requirements for admission to Virginia Commonwealth University is guaranteed a spot. So that's a, that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're at the citizens' comments, and, um, the first one is Rebecca McMasters. Would you come forward, please? And, uh, just some housekeeping. We usually ask you to state your name, your address, and we are looking at, uh, usually a three-minute li- limit, but we'll, we'll entertain whatever you need to say.
So, um, I'm an eighth-grade history teacher over at the middle school, and my students are looking forward to going. Um, there is 250 of them. I'm the one who's gonna stay behind with the ones that aren't going. But I wanted to bring up something that I am not to be a mom-to-be, and my daughter actually is a sub over there at the school. And right now, actually, there are five babies about to be born at the middle school. Um, they're all staff members, of course. Thank God for that.
I was taking a deep breath. Thank you for the clarification.
I worry sometimes on this. Um, I've actually talked with those staff members. Um, they have a problem of they don't have a daycare. They are being born from May to August. Sorry, my daughter knows a lot on that too. Um, and these moms, one of them actually is a dad-to-be too, don't know where their children are going to be, starting in like September when the school year is. And the CTE program I thought of, because my daughter and me, we both went to a high school over in Oregon, that they had a CTE program that actually the, the kids, the students would get to help with the childcare. And I don't know if it's, I don't know who to go to on this. I was like, you know, I'm gonna come to the board and say, "Hey, help me out, cuz I would like to help these staff members." Like I says, "I'm not having kids anytime soon." But it would also be good for teen moms, and I'm hoping we don't actually have many of those. Really hope so. So I don't know that, Mr. Barnes, on that. But if there was some way that we could help these staff to where they're not having their children an hour away from them, cuz that's what most of them will say. They don't have anywhere to take their kids but an hour away. And that's a stressful, even for me, just thinking about that.
And our locals, childcare, eh, have, none of them are accepting infants right now.
And so I don't know a program to help, but I know that the staff would love it if there was a way that we can come up with a program with the CTE and be able to help the staff. Cuz, I mean, they're just newborns coming in, but in a year, they'll be needing the preschoolers and whatnot. And my daughter and me, both, we loved doing it when I was in high school. That's a long time ago. But that, if it's a chance, maybe there's a way we could do this to help the staff cuz happy staff makes happy teachers.
That's a good point.
But I don't know if there's anyone that could help me in helping get this sorted out. So I thought I'd bring it to you guys.
Well, thank you for the information. We appreciate you looking out for your fellow teachers. Thank you. Uh, the next person signed up is Ms. Yates. Good evening, Ms. Yates.
Good evening, um, board members. Good evening to, uh, my former colleagues and to my Delta sisters. Um, I have also cleared this with Ms. Gozen. I have signed up twice because I'm looking up for two different organizations.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, they warned us.
And I believe I have to state who I am.
You have to state who you are and your address.
All right. Well, my name is Sharon Diana Bonner Gates. Make no mistake about it. And my address is 16026 Flatfoot Road in Dinwiddie.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, but anyway, I am here this afternoon because I'm here, first of all, on behalf of Historic Southside High School Education Center. We would like to thank this board for, um, him being such wonderful partners with us. Uh, we thank you for the support that you have provided. And I do have some notes, so I, I do not forget anything. It continues to mean a lot to the association that you do support us. And also, I would like to extend a special thanks to your most efficient school board clerk, Ms. Bonnie Gozen.
Yes.
Lord knows she didn't, has not forgotten who I am and how forgetful I can be sometimes.
Say, she's not as old as you are.
No, not at all. Not at all.
So she doesn't forget yet.
No, she doesn't forget yet. And I haven't forgotten that I haven't, that I've forgotten.
Right.
You taught me that.
I taught you that.
Yeah, you did. But anyway, Ms. Gozen, um, thank you so much. We do appreciate, um, your support. And on February 3rd, we, we sponsored a Black History event, and we're so happy that Dr. Weston came out to support us. Ms. Benjamin, and I did forget to tell you that I am in District Four. Ms. Benjamin is my school board representative. Um, uh, Ms. Pittman was there as well, and a past board member, Ms. Be- Ms. Merritt. And we're so happy that you all took the time on a Saturday to come out and, um, be there for our Black History program. I'd also like to thank your maintenance department because they set up all of the chairs that we need. Well, we set the chairs up, but they did struggle to bring them up, up the stairs. And we, we appreciate, um, their support as well. And then last week, we hosted the fifth grade classes, and we took them through the facility to share the history. So I wanted to make sure to, to thank the, Mr., Mr. Ampe and his, um, tech support team because they haven't forgotten either that I'm not tech savvy, and I needed somebody there every day. And so they've, they made sure to send somebody every day. And we do have, um, some fifth graders coming in this week as well. I wanna thank the principals and Dr. Clay for, um, accepting the invitation to bring the fifth graders in. Dr. Weston, you would be so happy that those fifth graders have been amazing. They have been very well-disciplined. They have been, um, participatory. They've been inquisitive. They wanted to find me on the picture. I told them, "Look for the cute one." So, so they, they did that. They did a good job at it. So, um, so it has been amazing to see those young people come and be excited about this building that they come in, they play basketball for, in the building. And they were not aware of why it was a historic, um, historical site. So I wanna thank, um, thank, uh, the teachers as well and their chaperones. They even had some parents to come, to come with them. So we do thank you for, um, your support. And I also wanna thank Dr. Joyner. Dr. Joyner and her staff made, um, and made an effort to make sure that that facility looked very good. It looks lived in now. We're very pleased. We had a little bit of a glitch, but we worked around that. Um, and that's what it means when we can work together and be flexible. And so we worked around that. And so we're very well pleased at the way, the way it looks as, as well. And so I hope I haven't forgotten anybody. But, um, if I have, um, charge it to Ms. Gozen and not me. Because she didn't remind me. Now, I have, I believe I have the honor and the privilege to turn this over to, um, Ms. Anna Bradley, who is the chair of our Social Action Committee for Delta Sigma Theta, um, the Delta Sigma Theta, um, Sorority Petersburg Alumni Chapter. And I hope Ms. Alicia Drake got there.
I have to live with Ms. Drake.
Good evening. Our chapter president, Tanya Brown Fletcher, regrets that she could not be here today, so I'm standing in for her. And Petersburg Alumni Chapter is delighted to be with you. And we're especially delighted that our member, Mary Benjamin, sits among you. And what an exciting time when another of our chapter members, uh, Tawana Johnson was, uh, acknowledged as your Teacher of the Year. And we're wishing her well in the statewide competition here. We're certainly no strangers to each other for those of you who may not be familiar with Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We were founded at Howard University in Washington DC in 1913. And over 111 years, we've grown to over 1,000 chapters, uh, not only in the United States, but throughout Asia, Europe, uh, the Caribbean, uh, and just about everywhere else. You can think, we, uh, we're collegiate chapters and alumni chapters, and we take a lifetime commitment to public service. And so, uh, since 1941, when Petersburg Alumni Chapter was established, we have provided scholarships, mentoring opportunities. Uh, we have an upcoming PSAT, SAT workshop that is being planned, and we will make certain that Dinwiddie students are available and participating in that. And despite all of our service initiatives, uh, we're constantly looking how we can be better and what better impact, uh, greater impact we can have for your students here. And so I also need to acknowledge, uh, DCPS because all of Delta owes you a big debt of gratitude because your school system produced our 14th South Atlantic Regional Director, Yvette Robinson. Would you please stand up? During her four-year tenure, she, uh, presided over hundreds of chapters in Virginia, South Carolina, North Carolina, and Bermuda, which is a nice trip to take here. And so at this time, I would ask all, we came here simply to listen and to learn again. We are, we will be evaluating, uh, our programs throughout the year and invite your comments on how, how we can be more impactful for your students. Would all members of Petersburg Alumni Chapter and Delta Sigma Theta Sorority please stand? Thank you. Let's still have another minute. I forgot to thank Dr. Dr. Clay, I believe, and, and Ms. Fire for, um, supporting and helping us as well with, um.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Now, we have board member comments, but I'm gonna skip over us first and go to the students first this time. And I'll start with you, Jonathan, the comments that you'd have, and then we'll go to Amani.
I did arrive late to the company that follows me today.
And we, we welcome your company. They're so well behaved.
Uh, I saw that Southside was on the agenda today. I tried to get here, you know, a bit quicker. And, you know, it is the best elementary school in Dinwiddie. That's not a biased comment. That's just the truth.
I understand.
And sometimes the truth hurts, so if it hurts you. But, uh, overall, I just, I like to see the growth in our county, you know? The development we're having, and especially in our CTE programs, you know? I really didn't get a partake a lot in the CTE programs. I went to do enrollment route. But, you know, just hearing from all my friends that are in CTE, all the opportunities and everything they have, it sounds like a fun experience. I definitely recommend it to any young student that really wants to get that experience and learn a lot about other things. And overall, you know, it's just good to see and be in this community.
Thank you. Amani.
Well, I will say that the truth does hurt cuz I'm a Sutherland baby. But, other than that, I just wanted to say that, you know, I always look forward to the recognitions. And today, there were definitely some notable recognitions that were made. Um, of course, congratulations to all of the Teachers of the Year and our Division Teacher of the Year. That is very important because the impact that teachers have on students is lifelong. It's a lifelong thing. And when students have a teacher that they can confidently say cares about them and their education, it's very important. And I also, of course, love to hear about the approval on our DECA trip. I hope that we can bring home that win. And overall, it's just a great experience to get this opportunity to be here with you all. You know, you all do great things, you know, in the front view and behind the scenes for the county, and that is very appreciated. And I'm just really thankful to be here and witness that. And of course, thank you for all the gifts. You know, I'm gonna have a lot to go through when I get home. But, um, overall, you know, I just hope everyone has a great night, and this has been a great meeting.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the board? We'll start on your end. Anything else that you'd like to add?
Um, no comments from me. Uh, I'm, I'm also a Sutherland graduate, so that it hurt a little bit, but, um, all is forgiven. But, um, yeah, I think it was a very productive meeting and glad to see everyone here.
I just wanna say, Dr. Clay did visit us one day with the fifth graders, and I was glad to see you there and thank you. And, um, that's the fifth grader right there. And he was there one day, and I was telling Dr. Weston that. He said, "I think I know you." And I said, "Do you have a brother?" And he said, "Yes." And he said, "Jonathan." And I said, "I do know you." So, but I'm not smarter than the fifth grader. I have to, you know, I guess. I'm finishing, I'm, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anything additional?
Yeah, just, I, I'm just still figuring stuff out here, and I'm convinced that you all are required to be here for your jobs, administrators. I haven't been told that officially, but I just want to acknowledge that I.
We don't take role, but we do observe.
We do observe. So, um, I, I, since there are administrators from all the schools in the room, I don't know all of you yet, but I'm looking forward. of you yet, but I'm looking forward, I think some of us will be at the schools tomorrow.
All of us will be--
All of us. So I look forward to meeting you. And again, I just wanted you to know that I want to help. And so please use us as a resource if there's any way that we can help. Certainly want to do that. And I also want to speak to Ms. McMasters. I appreciate the concern that you brought here. I don't know, and I guess that's something we can discuss at another time. I don't know that there's an answer to your concern, but I appreciate your heart in caring about your coworkers. It is challenging, childcare, as someone who runs a childcare program. Care for infants is challenging because there are so many regulations and whatnot. And I had never until tonight considered how it affected our schools. So you're, the fact that you brought it to our attention, I appreciate that. And again, I don't know what can be done, but it's on our minds now, and so I thank you for that.
Dr. Pearson. I have no additional comments. We appreciate you coming tonight and all the input that has been given to us and the celebrations, and very, very much appreciate all the gifts. Each year when this comes about, I feel like it's us that should be giving you gifts. I feel like, you know, we're standing here observing what you do and supporting, hopefully supporting what you do. So we thank you for the gifts, and we thank you for everything that you do each day. And Dr. Weston.
Yes, I just would quickly like to say that my dad always said to us, "Always surround yourself with people that make you better." And I think tonight, we've recognized people, we've heard presentations. I'd say we're doing okay here in Dinwiddie County. I'd just like to say thank you to you all, but I especially want to say thank you to Bonnie. Just is an amazing human. For those of you that have had the opportunity to be around her, to know her, to learn from her, to, she sets me up for success every day, and I don't tell you nearly enough. I just love you and love working with you, and I just appreciate you so very much. I think, I think we all have a Bonnie story or two. Thank you, Ms. Bonnie.
Hearing no objection, I now declare this--